And then they will have.
I guess, nobody else is showing up, I guess.
Okay.
If I could have everyone's attention, I'd like to call the continuation of the public hearing for application 2015-4 to order at, what do you got? 7:05. On October 21st, 2015. It's the construction of five single-family homes with associated sewer and drainage infrastructure. The site address is 450 James Farms Road, Stratford, Connecticut. The assessor's reference map, 50 Block 4, Lot 9. The applicant is Cummings Enterprise. Before we start, I'd like to read something into the record from a Robert Smith on 135 Pepper Ridge Circle, Stratford, Connecticut. It's to the commission. "I am a member of the CCG which is involved in preventing multiple dwelling housing on Judith Place. There is a question about the applicant's application. While the representative has stated that these units are not affordable housing, the language lists that it is. If it is not, in fact, an affordable housing application, then they need to apply for zoning change before anything else can be done." That's a technicality that the attorney could deal with, but it came to us, so it's part of our record as an exhibit, and that's it. Is the applicant or the applicant's representative present?
Yes, sir.
Could you please come up, sir?
Yes, Stephen Bellis.
State your name again.
I'm Attorney Stephen Bellis, and I represent the applicant.
Is there anything you want to say or go over before we have the town of Stratford, which is going to present their case in terms of an intervenor on this application? Is there anything you want to say beforehand?
Yeah, the only thing I will say is I handed to the administrator tonight the responses that we have to the prior intervenors.
Right.
Comments. And the three things that I handed her, I'd just like to have submitted into the record. It was comments and responses by our engineer and comments and responses by our soil scientists.
Right, well, we just got those now.
Yeah.
And I would ask, as a courtesy for the commissioners, if you could, if you're going to respond, give us a little time so we can receive these.
Okay.
From our administrator here, so we have time to look at it. We're just looking at them right now, so we can't come up with some kind of a formulation on this, even though we're going to extend the public hearing to next month.
Well, that's what she had told me, so that's why I did it.
Okay, all right.
She had given me an email that said that they were, that they were, the town was going to intervene.
Yeah, well, we're going to extend it anyway, but just so we have a little for, you know, a little time to look at the stuff, okay?
Okay, that's not a problem.
If you could, all right?
And then, depending on, I'm sure the town's going to put on whatever they want to hear, whatever you want to hear, I just want to be able to respond to that.
You will have time to respond, absolutely.
That's all I ask.
Yes, you will.
Okay, thank you. I have nothing else at this time.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, seeing that, then I will ask the town of Stratford's representatives, please come up, state their name, and then they can give their presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is James Cresswell. I'm an attorney at the law offices of Kevin Kelly and Associates with an address of 2505 Main Street in Stratford. As you mentioned, the town is intending to intervene in this proceeding as an environmental intervenor pursuant to Section 22A-19 of the general statutes. To that effect, I'd like first to submit a verified pleading to the commission to be accepted into the record, if I could.
Absolutely.
And I have provided a copy of that verified pleading to the applicant and also to counsel for the commission this evening. I do have a packet of information I intend to submit as an exhibit to the commission, and I do have an engineer, Tim Casey of STV Incorporated, here to testify tonight. However, in light of the fact that at least some changes to the proposal that I've had my experts review have been submitted to the commission tonight, and I heard you, Mr. Chairman, say that you just received them this evening, I would leave it up to the commission as to whether you prefer to hear testimony from Mr. Casey tonight based upon what he's already reviewed, or, given that the hearing will be held open, I would reserve the right or request the right for Mr. Casey to speak to whatever modifications have been made anyway. In the interest of expediency, I'd understand if you prefer to just hold off on his testimony until a future date, but I leave that up to the discretion of the commission. He is here and can speak to what he has reviewed to date.
I understand. What do you say?
I think we should hear it.
Yeah, I'm more inclined to hear your presentation on the original application, and then we could re, we're going to extend this public hearing till November anyway. And whatever his modifications are, can be taken into consideration, you know, until the next meeting, but I'd still like to hear your presentation in entirety.
In that case, Mr. Chairman, I have a packet. I've provided copies to the applicant and to counsel for the commission. I've also got copies for the commissioners as well.
Thank you.
The one on the back is an original, we call it, so that's going to be the official. And I have more copies, and I think I counted enough, but it's not it. I do have more here.
Okay. The original.
Okay.
You need one? Here, let me keep one.
Yeah.
How many you guys got? One each? Okay. All right, let me have one. Actually, I'll take that after she's done.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
The, as you can see from the packet, they're essentially a brief overview that I've drafted to sort of highlight what I think are the relevant areas of the assorted experts. The experts that we had reviewed the plans are Tim Casey from STV, who I've already mentioned, and then Rema Ecological, George Logan, and Sigurin Godt are two soil scientists who reviewed the plans and conducted a site visit in January of this year. I also referenced comments of Stephen Danzer, which have previously been added to the record. I believe they're Exhibit O of the record.
Right.
As a starting point, Rema Ecological highlights a conclusion that the wetlands at issue are of greater import than that which the applicant gives to those wetlands. The reason for this, in part, is that the applicant bases his conclusions, Mr. Klein, the applicant's soil scientist, on a site visit of December 2012. In the intervening time, there's been perhaps an increase in vegetation, tree fall, which Rema concludes indicate a greater wildlife support function of this wetland. That, I think, is a basis for why the functional assessment that is reached by Rema differs from that reached by Mr. Klein. So we would conclude that the wetland is more important than the applicant has suggested. In addition, Rema highlights the dense packet of hardwood mature trees, which are located precisely where these houses are proposed to be built. Rema's report highlights the function of these hardwoods in terms of taking nutrients out of the soil, in terms of absorbing groundwater, and notes that there is not, in the applicant's materials, a plan for conservation of these trees outside of the 100-foot conservation easement, and Rema notes that it's actually important to consider the impact of the felling of these trees, albeit outside of the 100-foot conservation easement, and the effect that that will have on the wetland itself. Tim Casey, and he's here to speak to this in more detail, based upon the initial application materials that he's reviewed, again, not what was resubmitted tonight, reaches a conclusion that the application has submitted is incomplete. Certain groundwater elevations, he's concluded, have not adequately been documented, that there's a difference, I think, in the plans and the stormwater runoff report that you have in terms of how much storage is available, reaches a different conclusion as to the acreage of impacted area actually on-site. I'm going to let Mr. Casey speak to that in more detail, obviously. And then I also would just like to highlight Mr. Danzer's comments, because he points out, and I think is the only place I've seen it noted in the record, that there is no plan for snow removal and snow storage that's been addressed. He notes that the impervious area of the cul-de-sac and the driveway that is contemplated will necessitate the removal of snow through the use of salts or other chemicals in order to melt the snow, that the snow will have to be stored somewhere when it is removed from the driveway and the cul-de-sac, and that the ensuing snow melt will necessarily flow to the east of the property and into the wetland. As I said, that essentially is the overview, but I provided it in writing for you together with the original materials by the expert witnesses themselves. I'd like to have Tim Casey come up, and Tim tells me he can, he will be using the modified maps, which have been presented for the first time tonight, but obviously, he hasn't reviewed those. He'll be speaking to what he has reviewed previously.
Okay, fine. If you would just state your name for the record, sir?
My name is Tim Casey. I'm a professional engineer with STV Incorporated, Milford, Connecticut.
Thank you.
The plans, the plans that I reviewed were dated 4/28/15 and 6/11/15. I reviewed it in terms of a civil engineering review, and I'd like to discuss 10, 10 points that I, that I found deficient with the plans. The first is the groundwater elevation at the site. There were test holes dug previously that indicated an elevation that modeling occurred, and when you interpolate between the two test holes, you get the high groundwater elevation to be 215.4. So that's the high groundwater based on the test pit and the modeling found. Now, the bottom of the storage system here, when you include its precast system on six inches of rock, that elevation, the bottom of that rock, is at 215.5. So you have a tenth of a foot from the bottom of the proposed storage system to the high And when you're surcharging the groundwater like that, you create a mounding situation where the groundwater expands and builds up there, so you're actually going to get some of that into the storage unit before you get, so you're going to lose some of your storage because of that mounding situation. The next, the next point is the exfiltration rate that was used in the design of the system. So you use the exfiltration rate, and that reduces the size of the storage volume that you need, because you're saying it's leaving and percolating into the ground. And they used a rate of 1 inch per hour. Now, you know, that would be fine if the groundwater was down 2 feet, but the groundwater is a tenth of a foot below the bottom of the system, so you're going to get very, you're going to get very little exfiltration, infiltration into the, into the groundwater. You know, they should not have included that exfiltration rate at all in the design. That would be a sound practice, not to include that because the groundwater was so high. You also have a condition, too, where, you know, the base, the bottom of this system tends to clog up over time, so then, so then there goes your exfiltration rate as well. We also computed the, the area contributing to this, these catch basins into that storage system. We computed 2.8 acres, and the designers computed 2.23. So we're about half an acre off, which is significant on a site of this size. They also mentioned in their, in their write-up that the galleries would be inspected every 12 months, and once the sediment builds up a foot, it would be vacuumed out clean. Well, that one foot should have been included in their design, because if it builds up one foot, there goes your storage. You're not getting the storage that you need. So they should have taken that one foot of sediment, you know, into their design and made, made the storage system larger. Then we come down to the actual storage volume. Now, we computed approximately 4,000 cubic feet of storage from the system that was proposed, and the designers came up with approximately 6,500. So we're, we're off by 2,500 cubic feet. I know when they computed their volume, these precast boxes give you dimensions, but it's out to out, so it's from the top of the box to the outer limits of the box. So you have to deduct the 3 inches to the thickness of the walls and the 5 inches for the thickness of the top slab, which is not done, that was just all included in there. So that reduces your actual volume. So that's, that's one reason why we disagree by, by so much. The other point was, there were two catch basins along the driveway coming in, which went directly into the, into the storage system. It did not go through the defender, but I believe in this new drawing here, it does go into the defender. I think that was devised and that was taken care of. Another point is the, is the outlet control. There was next to no detail on exactly how that was to work here. There should be some kind of cross section, some kind of details. There's a, there's a 4-foot difference in elevation between the discharge point and the existing ground. There was some riprap shown there, but it should be, it should be a designed, a designed riprap, and there should be further detail on exactly how that control structure takes into account this 4-foot difference in elevation. Another point is, is access to detention systems. They do have to be maintained, they do have to be cleaned out, and there was no access indicated on the drawings. There should be an overall storm management system, maintenance plan, provided for the detention system and the catch basins and the, and the defender. And the, and the last point was the, it appears as though you'll need a sanitary sewer pump to go from this house to the northeast over to the pump station. It seems to be lower than the pump station, and it appears as though you'll need a, some sort of pump, a sanitary sewer pump to get it to the main pump station. So in, in conclusion, I feel that the, the size of the storage system is grossly inadequate. It's much too small, for the reasons I noted, for the, for the exfiltration, that the rate that they use when, when, when a high groundwater condition, you only have a tenth of a foot, so you're not going to get that exfiltration. We disagree with the acreage leading to it by half, by half an acre. And the calculated volume of storage, again, is significant. It's 2,500 cubic feet that we disagree with. So I, I think it's, again, I think the system, the storage system is, is much too small. It's not adequate for the proposed belt. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the commissioners at this time? Tina, do you have any questions?
No questions.
No? Thank you for your presentation.
Mr. Chairman, the, I would note, obviously, that we do have an additional report from Rema Ecological, and no representative from Rema was able to attend tonight. Obviously, the commission may have questions for one of the drafters of that document. I'm assured they'll be present at the next hearing. I think that also would satisfy the right of the applicant to question Representative Rema if they wished to. So essentially, that concludes the evidence I'm going to put on. The only thing I would add is that Mr. Casey makes, I think, two points. One is that there's an inadequacy of the size of the stormwater retention system as designed, and that this will lead to infiltration of stormwater that is untreated into the wetlands. That would be an adverse impact upon the wetlands upon which a denial could be based. In addition, he concludes, based upon the lack of detail of access for maintenance to that underground system, the absence of a stormwater management plan, and the apparent need for a, for a standalone pump from the house on the northeast corner of the cul-de-sac to the main pump station, as details that are missing from the application and need to be addressed. That, I would argue, would, would make this application incomplete as it has been submitted, and under Connecticut case law, incompleteness of an application is a standalone ground for denial as well. So I believe, based upon Mr. Casey's comments and the materials before you, you have two distinct grounds which, at this point, would warrant denial of the application as it stands.
Yes, Mr., go ahead, go ahead.
I apologize. I have a question for Mr. Casey. Am I too late?
Yeah.
If, does Mr. Casey have any knowledge of the defender sediment control system, and does he have an opinion?
I know, I know what you said before on other projects, and I haven't heard anything negative about it, so they do seem to, to work out with me.
That concludes the materials for the town. I would just ask that if the hearing is to remain open, one-
Oh, it's, it's going to stay open, because we have to go over what the responses were, and you'll have to have access to that, as well as the other intervenor that couldn't be present tonight.
That was actually-
We have to give him the opportunity to reflect on all this information, so.
So as long as one purpose, at least, of the continued hearing is to allow further comment, if necessary, from Mr. Casey, from a representative from Rema Ecological on any modifications that were submitted, that's the only thing I would like to ask for in the record.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Bellis, would you want to respond at all right now, or?
Yeah, what I'll do, just since we're all here, I have both my witnesses. They could just highlight what I handed you tonight.
Mm-hmm.
And briefly, not, they're not going to read the whole thing, and then you'll have a flavor for it, and you can review it, and then, of course, we'll come back so we can respond to the intervenor.
Yeah, well, staff is going to have to review as well.
But it might, it might be more helpful if I just have them explain it before you read it, if that's okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that all right with you?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. So why don't I have Manny Silva, he's the engineer, speak first?
Fine, fine.
Good evening, Manny Silva, from Rose Tizo &amp; Company Partner, Fairfield, Connecticut. Registered civil engineer in the state of Connecticut. So what, we generated a letter basically addressing some of the concerns that the intervenor had at the last meeting posed, and also staff. And the first, the first thing was the lack of consistency for sewer pumps. So basically, what we did was, as you know, I'm a little, I like to be dynamic. So the, what we did, what we have here is a sewer injector system, which is, has laterals that are gravity-feeding into a 2,000-gallon pump chamber, which by Connecticut statute and per the DEEP, DEEP, requires us to have a 24-hour storage volume from where the camp, the pump kicks on to where it starts to alarm. And we provide that, the, we exceed the, the amount of, with the 2,000 gallons, we exceed the amount that's required for the 24-hour storage by 133 percent. What we did, in addition to, because of some concerns with the intervenor and some of the neighbors, was what happens when the power goes out. In excess of what is required, we added a generator which is run off of propane. The propane generate, it'll have a 1,000-gallon propane tank. The generator will be the automatic type, which has a small battery in it to kick it on once it detects that the power from the grid has gone away, and which will activate a transfer switch, and it'll be run off the propane, and which, you know, 1,000 gallons is, we should be able to run that generator for quite a while. Again, that's an ex, that exceeds the, the generator, and that exceeds the requirement from the state. We have a duplex pump system, so that what happens is, as the flow, the level goes up and down inside the tank, one, one pump fires on, and then it drains the tank, and then the next time, the next pump comes on, so that the pumps alternate, so they're always exercised. You don't have a pump just sitting there, stationary all the time. And then, when you reach a certain level that actually it, you get to a flow, say if something should happen, everybody's flushing the toilets and taking showers at the same time, which this is designed to, with just one pump. But if something should happen where one of the pumps is not running as efficiently as it should, or that the flow is, there's an unforeseen amount of flow going in, that there's a level, there's a level at which both pumps fire on at the same time, and that is also a failsafe, and something that we do in engineering practice. We always, redundancy is, is essentially what we do with this. So we have a redundancy with the pumps, we have a redundancy with the power supply, we have a redundancy with what is required from the state for volume in case of power Number two was the status of the WPACA application of the sanitary sewer. Obviously, to go to the expense of designing and getting an approved sewer extension before having a project is a little premature, so the WPACA application right now is pending until we know we have a project. So an erosion control during, and post, during and post-construction. We've updated some of our details and notations on SP 2 and 3 to incorporate some best management practices during, for during construction, such as silt fences, silt sacks, and things of that nature. And then, post-construction, our best management practices or BPMs have to stay in place until we have the soil and the area stabilized, either with riprap or vegetation, and we also intend to use stabilization mats as needed for some of the steeper slopes. Another, number four was possible sanitary sewage spills due to inadequate design of sewer's pump system. Well, again, just to reiterate, I, I referenced the, the requirement from the Connecticut State DEEP about the requirement for 24-hour storage. So basically, you have to have a tank, no matter if it's a house or a commercial building, you're required to have 24 hours of storage. So basically, your maximum amount that you could create during a day, that's also with a peaking factor, so it's a five, so your peaking factor, in this case, would be about five times more than what you would normally have. So it, even there, there's a redundancy of a factor of five for what this development would generate in a 24-hour period. But then, we went above and beyond and also added a generator system that's fired off of propane. Storm management, the inadequacy of the stormwater galleries. It is true that the, the three, the 3-inch wall thickness of the galleries were not, in the report, the way the report's written, it kind of alludes to that, we didn't account for it. And in the calculations, that it doesn't quite account for the thickness of the wall, so the difference, the difference is that 3 inches around the perimeter of the galleries. Now, the intervenor stated that the volume per 4x4x4. Obviously, we have 100 and, 185 linear feet of it. We're not going to use 4-foot sections. We're going to use much larger 8-foot sections. So the 8-foot section volume, which I have the United Concrete here, is same as he referenced. Instead of holding 130 gallons per unit, they hold, hold on a second, they hold about, they hold 700 gallons per unit. And then, what we have is, when the system backs up to, it's basically a back, the system's backing up the water inside of it, so it's filling up to 4 feet high. What we have is, obviously, the volume of the storage, the control structure itself, which is a box that has some volume, and the pipes that are being, that are connecting these, these- structures also are going to be inundated. So the additional cubic footage for when you're at the maximum height or the 100-year storm is, for the catch basins, is about 72 cubic feet. There's 100 cubic feet inside the control structure that it can hold water. And the catch base, and then there's another 145 in the 12-inch pipes that are throughout the network, which gives you about 317 additional cubic feet that, to be fair with the engineers, was not detailed in the drainage report itself that that 317 additional cubic feet are in the system. But irregardless of that, we'll actually ignore that additional 317 and we'll comply with what the intervenor requested, which was to increase the amount of volume in the unit, negating the amount of concrete that's taking up by that volume. Even though we did account for it, we'll just increase that just to make the commission more comfortable with it and to kind of answer that from the intervenor. The, and then there was the issue of the actual use of the rain tables, which I find kind of interesting. So what we used was the DOT's Drainage Storm Water Manual. It's the standard and it's the statutory standard for design in the state of Connecticut. It was published in October of 2000. The DEP Storm Water Manual was also published in 2004, I believe, and it references the DOT Storm Water Manual for hydrological design. Their rain tables use 150 years' average of storm water events or rain events in the state of Connecticut. That includes hurricanes, droughts, you know, the flood of 1955. So that, to say that we didn't design correctly based on the rain tables is inaccurate. The statutory requirement or the statutory rain tables are the DOT Storm Water Manual, October 2000, which was used here. Now, he wanted to use, he stated some kind of extreme rain events that, you know, happened in the last couple of years. But then again, and that's why the DOT probably wrote a letter saying that the engineer should use the discretion as to that the values may change due to an extreme set of events that happened, you know, two, three years ago. But then again, 2015 has been a drought year. So we've had much less rainfall throughout the year and some scientists will say that we are in a dry period going forward. So not to say that one extreme is, should be used or the other, but that is why we have the 150 years' average used in storm water design. And again, the town of Strafford requires us to design to the 25-year storm. We, at the request of this commission, are designing this to the 100-year storm, which is above and beyond the town of Strafford's statutory requirement. Potential runoff, potential for runoff or flood damage adjacent to adjoining properties. Again, we're designing everything to the 100-year storm and we're doing it by volume. And so if anything, the oversizing of the system to the 100-year storm event will actually create a reduction in flow to adjoining properties in the everyday term. Obviously, at that 1 percent chance per year of the 100-year storm happening, it would be equivalent or slightly, slightly less, I think it's, we have it at a reduction of 12 percent. But say at the 25-year storm, which is Hurricane Sandy, we have a reduction of 30, 30 percent. So the adjacent properties will have a 30 percent reduction, which is actually going to aid them in floodwaters from today's condition. Impact or potential runoff into and out of wetlands and watercourses. Again, the runoff that we have, we collect it, we have a treatment train, which is, you start off by collecting it in catch basins in certain areas. And then we have, I just want to see if I have the detail here. So basically, the treatment train is two things. You have to have a primary treatment and a secondary treatment. So what we have is the collection of storm water and then it goes into the secondary treatment, which is the Vor-Tecnic's unit, which takes out heavy metals and sediment and also takes out floatables, so like oil bottles, things of that nature, will then be inside of that downstream defender. When you, when we maintain that, which is about every six months, you suck out the oil off the top and then you go down to the sediment down below. Now, the reason why I put that ahead, the secondary treatment above the primary treatment, which is the gallery system, is because the maintenance, and I know that the engineers spoke of the 12 inches of sediment, that's basically just a rule. I don't anticipate ever there being 12 inches of sediment in the galleries. So that's why we don't design for 12 inches of sediment in galleries. And the reason is because we put the secondary treatment ahead of the galleries. So we're cleaning the water with this secondary or mechanical unit ahead of the water that's being discharged into the galleries so that really essentially clean or cleaner water is going into the gallery system. So floatables and sediments should not be going into the gallery system at all. And we did provide observation ports and -- we will provide some observation ports for the maintenance of the gallery system, but we don't anticipate there being any sediment in the gallery system. The maintenance speaks to 12 inches because if you do see 12 inches of sediment, there's a problem. And then you have, that has to be addressed, either with more frequent cleaning of the system or there's something, there's something broken. So that, that just has to be like, the 12 inches is just a thing that if the property manager sees 12 inches at any time, he has to clean it. He has to address the issue. It's not, the frequency is basically the 12 months. So you check it every 12 months, there shouldn't be anything in there. But if anytime you see up to 12 inches at anything, even the catch basins, then that has to be addressed immediately. So that's how the maintenance plan works. So the next one, number eight, is basically about the storm water quality versus, and how much, I think it, Mr. Casey brought up, we have to look at rectifying the numbers between who has a correct impervious surface, which can be looked at. I'll look at his numbers and then we'll work out exactly what that impervious number should But any impervious surface that we have, we intend to control, not just for quantity but for quality. Impacts, number nine was impacts of inboard dust or construction debris. We added some notations on SP 7 to also include some best management practices for dust control. And basically, what dust control is, is when you have dry times like we do right now, some of your stockpiles and things of that nature will need to be covered or you'd have to implement some kind of light misting system for any kind of soil processing machinery. And that's basically just adds a misting, a misting add-on to a lot of those, a lot of that machinery so that any particulates that are in the air get weighed down with the mist and it goes straight to the ground. And then it's controlled there on the ground by water. Doing similar things over at FedEx right now on Lurch Boulevard. Plans to make, number 10 was plans for maintenance of catch basins, oil separators, groundwater storage units. Again, we have, we like to put it on the plan and that's what we did. We put a gallery inspection and maintenance plan and for downstream defenders also. Right on the plan, it's right here, so that when it does, when, if there is an approval, we file that right on the land records and it's, becomes legal. I think that's, that's basically from that letter. And I think I kind of talked to, and I like to talk to some things that STA just brought We did use a very conservative number for exfiltration. I think he actually said that that was very conservative and that we are only slightly above the groundwater table. And mounding does occur, but he's also ignoring that there is exfiltration through the lateral, lateral components of the storm water system. It is not just something that it exfiltrates straight down. So basically here you see that there's an open bottom to the gallery system, so the water is allowed to infiltrate straight down and that'll be on a gravelbed bed. And then on the sides also, there's one, there's trap rock basically put on the sides of the gallery system. And what's that for? That's basically to allow water to bleed out the sides of the gallery system and also exfiltrate up to four feet above the bottom of the galleries. So he's arguing that, okay, you're only about less than, less than a foot away from the high water table, high water, seasonal high water table. So that's what he gets up to at its maximum sometime in the spring. So on an everyday basis, it's much lower. And then what we have here is actually the water that, when it does fill up this gallery, is allowed to exfiltrate only up four feet above that same level. And it actually goes out at a one-to-one, one-to-one slope away from it. So the actual footprint or plume of water that's being infiltrated into the ground is much larger than the gallery itself. It's about four feet on either side, so you have a total of about 12 feet. Now, what he's saying is, is something that we would use when we're designing septic systems because we need to have a kind of, we need to have a buffer area about 18 inches for affluent to clean itself before it gets to the water table. We don't have that in this case because this is cleaner water. It's not sanitary affluent, it's basically rainwater. So the need for a big buffer between the regional, the seasonal high water table and the bottom of the galleries is not required. But again, we could always, if the commission would like, we could eliminate the exfiltration and just design it without exfiltration being, even, even the conservative exfiltration that we're using, we could eliminate it and design it without exfiltration at all. It's possible. The control structure cross-section is basically, it's basically an SP 2. Here's the control structure and we do a cross-section where we have a weir wall and 3.5 feet high with an orifice of, sorry, I can't read that far, 9.2 inches. So basically what that is, is that we're going to block the water. There's going to be a, on a rain event, there's a bunch of water that's going to go into the galleries, it's going to want to come out the control structure, but really there's going to be a wall there to stop it from leaving. And we're only going to let out nine-inch hole of water. So basically, a little nine-inch hole is what, the amount of water that we're going to let out throughout, all the way to the 100-year storm. And that will fill up the galleries to, at the 100-year storm, all the way to the top and then it'll release the water either through infiltration into the ground or out of that nine-foot hole slowly over time. And I think that's all the questions they had. Any questions for me?
I will ask the commissioners. Mr. McCann, do you have a question?
Excuse me. Going to the sanitary system.
Yep.
Do all five structures flow gravity to the holding chamber?
Yes, the intent, yes, the intent. And I'll, I know that he brought up a case that he thinks that one of them is not, but they all should be, yes.
They should or do?
Yes. Well, I'm going to, because I'm not going to say that I had a second look after I heard the comment, but they will be, all gravity to the pump.
Let me just get Mr. Wade first, go ahead, John.
Going to the pump system, do you know exactly where the check valves are located there?
Yeah, the check valves are actually on the outflow of the pump. So what you have is, see if I got it. So basically nowadays, why did I use that word? Now, in today's usage, when you have pump systems, now they create tanks with the actual valve box attached to them. We used to create, we used to have like a concrete tank and then you had a valve box past the tank. So what happens is you're going to have two force mains coming out of the pumps, up and over, and then just outside the tank, you'll have two check valves, one for the, one for pump one, one for pump two. And then that will come together to a unified force main out to the street. So what the checks valves are for are basically to stop backflow coming into the system. And the reason why we use two is because we have two pumps. It's a duplex system.
Any other questions? Mr. Blake?
The, thank you. On that propane tank, is that below ground or above ground, a 1,000-gallon tank you're saying?
Yeah, it's, in general, what you do is, depending on the way we want to approach it, you could either do a belly tank, which is attached right to the bottom of the generator. But typically with propane, we bury the propane tank. 1,000 gallons typically is underground.
Okay.
And then you just see like a little cap, almost like a well cap to where they service it.
Yeah, I understand. All right, thank you.
Yes, Steph?
Yes, I had a question regarding the underlying assumptions used to calculate the current storm water outflow at the--
One second, please.
Yeah, so I had a question about the, the underlying assumptions used to calculate the storm water outflow from the site in its current condition. So I tried my best to go through TR-55, the method used to calculate the outflow. How are the curve numbers calculated for the existing site? Because I noticed that going through TR-55, there's a table, I think it was 22C, where it says that a site that's wooded would, could have a curve number as low as 32.
Correct.
And I noticed the curve numbers you used were significantly higher.
Yeah, probably around 60, I think.
Correct.
Yeah, so what it is, is that the curve number for 30, and how we come up with this, basically we take the, the ground condition as a percentage of area. So if you have some impervious area from the existing driveway, or you have some grass area, or you have some wooded area, you take a percentage of that area by, and you do a weighted average, which I'll provide. I know that the program doesn't give it to you right away, doesn't give it to you by default. Have to do a screenshot of how those percentages came out. Now, the average, I think it came around 60, I don't, I don't remember it quite off the top of my head. But the reason for that is, is that you might have a wooded area that's, say like hemlock, hemlock woods, which is, has very little ground cover. So it's, it's a very established forest, so there's no infiltration of sunlight down to the base. So the under, the under canopy is very open. That can generate a runoff coefficient of, you know, something a little higher. Or if something that's low would be, like I said, let me, a hemlock, hemlock woods that's very dense canopy so that underneath you just have is open soil, so it just goes right in. There's really no runoff. Something that has a lot of underbrush, undergrowth, similar to this, has a more, has an opportunity to runoff more because, as you know, open soil will absorb more water versus a grass slope or something that has very dense vegetation. So I think this is kind of a, I think what we looked at it was is, it's kind of a typical, I think if you look in TR-55, a typical condition that you would have at an acre, half-acre residential neighborhood, which will get you somewhere around the 60, 50 to 60 mark. The 30s is like really, I mean, the 30s is something, you know, you got to have, the TR-55 is designed for every single soil condition that you could have in the United States. So if you have a desert, if you have a dense forest, if you have open meadow, or you've had a paved parking lot. So the 30s is more of like an open, very-- So the 30s is more of like an open, very, I think they use the term foul soil condition, where it's kind of a rough surface and kind of takes in water very quickly. We are in a type three zone, so the soils do not take in water very readily. So because of the organic, the amount of organics and the amount of clay that's in the area. So that's why we used kind of a 60. But I can go into more detail. I could probably submit how we did that breakdown for the CN numbers proposed and in existing. Hope that answered your question.
Yeah.
Is there any, are you all set? Is that good?
Yes, I'm all set on the engineering.
Are there any other questions from the commissioners? No. Thank you very much.
Thank you, a pleasure always.
I will ask the town if they want to respond now, or if they want to wait until next There's no rush to judgment here, so you...
I think the town would, would look to respond next month, having the...
Okay, that's fine. Okay, great. Mr. Bellis?
Yes, the other report that we submitted was from our soil scientist, who made some responses. And I have Jim Cowan, and he could just very briefly highlight and show you on a map, perhaps, you know, before, when you review the material, help you review.
Sure.
And he can speak briefly on it.
Yeah, sure.
Mr. Jim Cowan, he's from the Environmental Planning Services.
Good evening. For the record, my name is James Cowan. I'm a professional wetland scientist and a registered soil scientist with Environmental Planning Services. I would just like to highlight some of our responses to Mr. Danzer's report.
Sure, go right ahead.
And you have before you, I believe, our letter report dated October 14th. And I'll just go briefly, point by point. In bold, we have some of the comments by Mr. Danzer, and then we have our responses to those comments. So the first one was, Mr. Danzer stated that all parties seem to agree that the wetlands perform valuable functions. And that's not what we said in our report. In our report, we stated that the wetland functions and values were limited. And they were limited for a number of reasons, and I'll just say quickly a few of those. Some of the reasons it's limited is because it's a narrow drainageway wetland with water that is intermittent or semi-perennial. It flows some of the time. And it doesn't have deep ponded areas that have permanent aquatic habitats, and it's not large. And as a flowing wetland, it has minimal vegetation. When, when you have flow, you don't have vegetation. So, so it doesn't have what, a high diversity and extent of wetland vegetation. And furthermore, in terms of the context, the wet, the wetland system is fragmented. And that kind of goes to the next point of Mr. Danzer's, that there was comparatively less discussion about the significance of the off-site context. And we did a watershed evaluation of the wetland, so we did do extensive look at the off-site context. So we disagree with Mr. Danzer's characterization of our report. And I would like to point you to the two graphics at the end of our report on page eight and page nine. Page eight, we have a characterization of the drainage area, which is different than what Mr. Danzer says. And I'll come back to that in a minute, but I'd like to point your attention to page nine, which shows the existing development within 80 feet of the wetland system. And this is in, Mr. Danzer says that the, the system, the wetland system is, is largely undeveloped and pristine. And you can see by the yellow here how much of the wetland system is developed within 80 feet of the stream, which in this short section is more than half. So I don't know how Mr. Danzer came to the conclusion that, and this is actually, he says that the, at the bottom of page two, the perennial water course is noteworthy for its relatively undeveloped wetland buffer. We disagree. That's not our analysis at all, and I don't know how he came to that conclusion. I do want to point, and we've done some watershed analysis, and we come up with different areas based on our GIS analysis than Mr. Danzer does. So we disagree with his characterization of the area that drains this, and that this stream system contributes to. And the other thing I just wanted to point out, he characterizes this as a perennial stream. And he says, this perennial stream system is a direct conduit for any pollutants or sedimentation into the Houston River. Well, it's not a perennial stream. We characterized it as semi-perennial. And if you go today, drive down Judith Terrace and look upstream, it's dry. There's no flow at Judith Terrace. There's no flow on the site. It's dry. I would hesitate to even call it saturated. It may be moist soil. So it's not a perennial stream. We looked at air photographs, we looked at the history of the site, and on the page four, he says, "An undisturbed upland buffer of 80 to 1," maybe he means 100 feet, not 1,000 feet. I think that's a typo, "is needed to maintain existing principal functions of the wetland." And that's incorrect for two reasons. The first is, we did not identify any principal functions of the system. But more importantly, 80 to 100 feet of undisturbed buffer is neither necessary nor warranted. It doesn't currently exist in the watershed. Adjacent properties or nearby properties have lawn right down to the wetland edge on both sides of the wetland corridor. The same condition exists immediately south of the site. And he also says, "The perennial water course is located down slope from the developed portion of the site and will be the receptor in the advent of any sewage leaking from the system." Well, the same could be said of virtually all sewer, sewer systems in the town of Stratford. That's where sewer systems are placed. And it's, it's no more a risk here than anyplace else. Proper design, installation, and maintenance is important in all of our systems. So we don't think that this site has any particular risk of failure higher than anyplace else in town. And probably less if it's a new system. And then he talks about hydrologic impacts due to removal of forest cover. And I won't go through it, the, we have a detailed analysis of that. But first is that the trees will be replaced by grasses and shrubs, which also transpire water. Second, the reduced shade will increase the temperature, which increases evapotranspiration. Third, the growing season for grasses is longer than that for trees. And then we do give an analysis, and we come up with important, and the other factor is, the seasonal high water table occurs when the vegetation is dormant. It's in the winter and early spring before things leaf out. So we don't see any hydrologic impacts on the groundwater from the development. And we do have, you know, there's more detail here. I don't know how much detail you want me to go through, but really the highlights are, this is a fragmented watershed with limited functions as a narrow stream corridor. And, and we believe that the measures that are being taken to protect it, sediment erosion control, that the buffer area is adequate, conservation easement is adequate to protect the resource, and that we do, are, having read Mr. Danzer's report, we don't, our opinion remains the same, that there will be no direct adverse impact to wetlands or secondary impacts. And so our conclusion is the same. And I'd be happy to answer any, any questions or go into more detail. I just wanted to give you a little guide on how to...
No, that's fine. Well, I'm sure Mr. Danzer's going to review your responses. And probably come back with his own responses to your response, I would assume.
Right.
Do any of the commissioners now have any questions?
Well, I would just like to make a comment in that, through Mr. Klein's report, he cites areas of development both north and south of the property that are within 80 feet of the wetland system. However, if you look at all these properties, the end of Candlewood Road, 170, 200, 215, 195 Judith Terrace, the homes on Keating Road, these were all built in the 1970s for the most part. There's only one property out of those that was built in around 1987. I think that was one of the properties on Keating. So these were all built before environmental regulations came into effect. So they were all looked at from a different frame of reference than we are today. Now that we have environmental laws in place, it's to take a look at this plan and see what exactly we can do to make sure it's not going to affect the wetland and create any more fragmentation than we already have. Because even though, yes, what Mr. Klein is saying is that it's a fragmented wetland, it's not connected to any other major wetland, it still in and of itself could have at one time been a very productive habitat. And our job here is inland wetland commissioners is to protect that and hopefully one day restore it in the future. So I just want to make sure that the commissioners are not taking the basis of this previous development in the area as a, as an okay for us to go ahead with approving anything that comes in front of us in the way of working near the wetlands. So I, I think that just needs to be kept in mind as we move forward.
Understood. And just a, a quick response to that, part of our analysis here is a response to Mr. Danzer saying we didn't look at the context. And so it's important to look at the context of the existing watershed and how it has affected its current function. We agree that an undeveloped water, unfragmented watershed and stream system has higher functions and values. The surrounding fragmentation has affected the wetland's ability to support wildlife. It, it may have affected the hydrology and a number of other factors. So, and we have taken a higher standard than what was done in the 70s in terms of providing a significant buffer that's adequate to renovate any stormwater that would pass out of the system in the direction of the watershed. So we've utilized science to protect the functions that are still there. And it, I, when I first started in this business, I was, I was asked the question, well, what can we do to eliminate impacts from this wetland? And actually, the person in your chair responded to the commission ahead of me, it says, "We would have to go to the other side of the street," because it was all of the surrounding development that had the impact, not what we were proposing. So having said that, we've, we've done a capable job in protecting the resources that, that exist today and that are consistent with, with the surrounding land use.
I also had one additional comment on the hydrologic impact due to the tree removal. So Mr. Klein cites that the amount of water that would be retained by a tree is almost equal in amount to what would be retained by an equal quantity of grass. However, I don't really think that he puts it into perspective in that this wooded area where we have trees is also surrounded by grass. The tree at the same time is surrounded by grass and vegetation that would increase its overall ability to retain water, as opposed to just being a single tree in soil that has its roots spread out over a given area. He's only considering the tree and not what's currently existing around the tree itself. So it's not just the tree, there's vegetation surrounding it that also is going to be retaining water. And so then you would have more water retention than you would if it was just a plot of homogeneous
I, I hear what you're saying. In, in looking at, at the site, I did not see much of an herb layer under the tree. Trees, there were scattered ferns. There certainly was a shrub layer that's relatively dense of mostly spice bush, but not much of an herb layer. Certainly it would be a change. It would be a conversion. And so take a look at Mr. Klein's analysis. The points being is that when you do remove the tree canopy and have more of an open condition, you have higher temperatures that increase the evapotranspiration than you would have in the understory in a shaded condition, as well as a, an extensive herb layer grows longer earlier in the spring and later in the fall, so you extend it. So it's not, it's not identical. We're not claiming that it's identical, but we're saying that it's comparable.
Okay. Yes, I have a question for Mr. McCann first.
How much work have you done in Stratford in the past? Have you had other contracts where you've worked and made opinions on projects in Stratford in the past?
We have worked on other projects in the past in Stratford, yes.
What is "we"? Your, your firm?
Our firm has, yes.
Have you?
Yes.
Yeah. Could you tell me what those are?
I've worked on Roosevelt Glen.
The south end?
The south end.
Of Stratford?
It's Stratford, yes.
Okay. Any particular project?
Pardon?
Any particular project that you've worked on? I'm just trying to, you're talking about fragmentation. I'm trying, as, you use the word limited in terms of the value of the wetlands. I think most of our wetlands in Stratford, unfortunately, because of fragmentation, have limitations on them. We're a commission that's charged with minimizing that in Stratford, not the rest of Connecticut. And I have to kind of question the limited phrase versus the one that was used by Dr. Danzer, saying relative. I mean, relative as termed to Stratford versus limited and global, I have a problem with. I got to tell you that.
Okay.
So do you know of many of our wetlands that aren't fragmented in Stratford that you've worked on?
I have, I haven't done extensive work in Stratford to be able to offer a townwide opinion.
Okay.
I, I have worked on a number of projects throughout the state of Connecticut that vary from undeveloped to developed watersheds.
Your question is our concern.
Understood.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Did you have one, Mr. Wade?
This, it's an open question to the development of the property here. I'd like to know what, if it's, what restrictions are going to be put on this community in terms... if it's, what restrictions are going to be put on this community in terms of, they can't be putting in a pool with chlorine or anything else going on that property. So there's got to be restrictions. And I'd like to know if there's a list of what's going to actually take place on that property after these units are built.
I don't think he'd be the proper person to answer that. These would be condominiums, and there would be, in the condominium documents, there would be exactly what you just mentioned, things that you can and cannot do on the property. And these are, there's no, as you suggested, there's, there's nobody that's suggesting that pool, in-ground pools or any pools are going to be put on this property. So, but that's where they would be found, to answer your question. It would be in the condominium documents, and there would be restrictions on what people could do. That's also where I think I mentioned in my first meeting, where they would collect the fees to do the maintenance for the, what the engineer had cited, the annual maintenance. So there would be a fund of monies to actually fund that.
While you're on that subject of maintenance, it's obvious by your experts' testimony that both the waste treatment system and the water retention system really depends on how well they're maintained, in terms of filtration, sediment removal, the operation of the pumps, the backup systems, okay? I would like to see some kind of language that gives us some type of safeguard on how these things are going to be handled, five, 10, 15 years down the road, because that's really the crux of your whole project. And if you could, you know, give us a
I think I know what you're looking for, yeah.
On, on how you're going to keep the maintenance of these systems in place, I would feel a lot better.
I have no problem doing that. I can't do it and answer you while I
No, I know that, but that's for the next meeting.
Next meeting, yes. I understand what you're asking me, and I'll, I'll have something for you.
Okay, very good. Are there any other questions in general?
Pump start of using. What brand name pumps are they using? Do you know that?
Do I know? I don't personally know. I don't know if we know that yet. Manny, do we know the type of pump? He said brand name, not
Yeah, like specs on it, any kind of a spec on it or?
I can't force anybody to use a certain name brand.
You're right. You know, you don't want
It's a free country. But what I normally specify is Zoller Engineering pumps.
Zollers?
Zoller, yeah. So that's basically what I use as my template. I look up their pump curves, and, and then I specify a Zoller pump or equal, because I can't force them to use a Zoller pump.
Oh, yeah, I understand that. You know, maybe Fisher Price or something like
No, no.
You know.
They're made in, I think, Minnesota.
Yeah, right. I'm familiar with Zoller.
Anything else?
All right, if you're, yes, sir, Mr. Schleyer.
What kind of provisions do you have, let's say there's a breakdown and there's an overflow as far as the cleanup goes in the condominium papers?
Generally speaking, there's, in, in the condominium documents, there's some, there's usually a fund set aside for someone to be like a site supervisor. That's the person that's responsible for snow plowing. That's the person responsible for having the grass cut. That same person will be responsible for the maintenance.
So you have five units?
Yes.
And if there's a real bad, it has to be cleaned up, a real bad overflow or a breakdown on the pumping system, five units are going to have enough as far as a backup, as far as cleaning up the, an area of the wetlands?
Are they going to have enough funds? Is that your question?
Funds, yeah.
Funds. I guess my answer to that would be that these, there's common charges that are charged for condominiums, and those common charges are charged on a monthly basis. And it's, it's typical for a condominium complex to have a buffer for an emergency, like you said. And sometimes those emergencies are like a roof collapsing or, you know, you know, something like that. So I think that the same buffer would apply, buffer of money I'm talking about, to handle in case there is an emergency.
So in the condominium papers, there will be a reserve fund?
That's what I'm saying.
For any contingency?
Exactly. I think that's what he was looking for, too. Yeah. Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, if, if we don't have anything else to discuss
No, not for tonight, I don't.
No, we'll, we'll just, I'm going to give the public a chance to speak.
Oh, okay.
And then, like I said, we will, in a second, we will continue the public hearing until next month anyway, so, all right?
Do you have the date on, on that hearing?
It's going to be November 19?
Hold on, I want to make sure I have it right.
I have it someplace, so.
It would be, we would extend to November 18?
18.
November 18, that's fine.
Yeah, that's the next
Yeah, thank you.
Meeting, scheduled meeting.
I appreciate that.
All right, at this time, I'm, yes, yes, the town, yes.
Would it be all right if I should vice have a few very brief questions with Mr. Talley?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you. Now, we have to share a microphone, I'm sorry. I actually just wanted to ask you a couple of questions really about the forest cover that we were talking about before. First, I wonder when the last time that you personally went to the wetlands to look at these trees was?
Today.
And would you agree with the comments of Mr. Danzer, and you may not have seen them, but we may be logical, that these trees we're talking about are mature hardwoods?
There are mature hardwoods there. There's a mix. There are some large tulip trees, which are a very fast growing tree.
And just in terms of your calculations about how much water the grasses that would replace these trees would uptake versus how much the trees themselves uptake, right now, is there any impervious ground underneath this forest cover?
Not that I have observed.
And when these houses are developed, there will be impervious ground created through the development process, right?
I'm not sure I understand.
Well, when the development is created, there'll be, for example, cul-de-sac, driveway homes where these trees currently stand, right?
Yes. Over part of it.
I just wondered, have you done any calculations in terms of how much water is presently being taken up by the trees that are there versus how much will be taken up by the grasses and shrubs that replace them, given that I presume you're not going to have grasses and shrubs where this impervious ground is?
It's apples and oranges. That's, it's, no one could do that. I mean, I don't know, I'm not quite sure I understand the question. That's why we have a stormwater system and a detention system.
Okay. If I'm not being clear, my question was just, you know, I know you said that you take issue with Dr. Danzer's position that by losing the trees, you will introduce more water, I assume, into the wetland because the trees won't be there to take the water up from the ground. Is that right?
So I'm not quite sure. We, you have our report, we have Mr. Danzer's report.
And I was just asking, because you have talked about taking care of that issue by replacing the trees with grasses, whether you'd actually looked at how many grasses would be there versus how many trees are there now, and therefore how much water would actually be continued to be transpired.
We have not done a whole site analysis. It's an example of what we have.
Thank you, that was all I wanted to do. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, are you set on any other questions from the town?
We're all set, thank you.
Okay, great. All right, at this time, I'm going to ask if there's anyone in the public that wants to speak in favor of the application. In favor. All right, and before I ask if anyone wants to speak in opposition, I'm going to ask if you could just limit your questions to the comments that were made tonight. And there will be no rebuttal or any comments from the commissioners, but all your questions will be noted and addressed before the next meeting. So if there is anyone here that wants to speak in opposition to the application, please come forward. State your name and address, please, clearly.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Sabatka, and I live at 200 Judith Terrace, Stratford, Connecticut. And I noticed during the discussions here that first and foremost, what they want to put up are homes, houses. Halfway through the conversation, the homes started being referred to as condominiums. So which is it, homes or condominiums? Thank you.
We'll get that cleared up. Anyone else want to speak in opposition?
Judy Rabkin, 292A Agawam Drive. My question is, the presentation was that the maintenance of all these systems will be funded through condominium reserves. But the condominium reserves are voted on by the residents. And so if you have five units, and the owners of those units say, we don't want to kick in money for the reserves anymore, it's too expensive, who is going to enforce it?
We'll answer that question. Yes, ma'am. Opposition, let this young lady first. Go ahead. Just your name and, your name and address, please. Just put that mic down a little closer to your mouth.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Frances Voight, 480 James Farm Road, and I'm the culprit that sold the land. But anyway, I had no idea of getting into anything like this. But I'd like to invite the whole commission up to come up and take a look at the property, okay? Just let me know when you're coming, and I'm glad to be there, because I can show you a perennial stream. I grew up there. The only problem with the perennial, Mr. Danzer is more correct, because I used to sit on a rock down there and watch frogs jump in and out. However, over time, you get leaves, you get sediment, you get whatever, but nobody's really looking. Now, when you get to the end of the square that's supposed to be the two acres, you have a property at the end. I don't know who owns that property. But that stream runs right across the end of her property, and it's still running there. But if you trace it back, it's there, it's just down there, that's all. And on that two acres that I sold Nick Owens, there's at least 100 trees. At least. They're going to really have to cut some trees down. In fact, further, about maybe only two years ago, Nick Owens came up and planted about 25 Christmas trees. Don't ask me why, but he did. And they're growing, you know. It's a little forest back there, actually. You can come right down to it. There's everything back there. There's deer, there's chipmunks, there's, there's even a bobcat. One of our neighbors took a picture of a bobcat, which I can't believe, because I get my cats in early at night. I don't want them, want them destroyed, you know. But, and that land should be rechecked for the exact two acres, because that's what I sold. I don't know what's creeping up or what's creeping out, but I think that should be specified. So I just wanted to agree with Mr. Danzer. It is a perennial stream. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wants to speak in opposition?
Hi, good evening. My name is Robert Smith, and there was a statement made, excuse me, about the, how dry it was. Well, if you go to the National Weather Service, they predict wort storms this year, and they predict nor'easters. Now, nor'easters are worse than hurricanes, because what they do is, they tend to stay in an area for a long period of time, and they drop moisture. We've seen that in the Carolinas, and we saw a storm path that was coming directly toward us. And because El Niño has moved, and the jet stream is coming across the nation, this is going to happen more and more. But if you go on that site, they warned about the nor'easters. So there will be more water there. There'll be more water than any other year. The temperature and the sound has gone down two degrees. And what's going to happen there? There's going to be more moisture in the air. When you get a nor'easter, it's going to hang in. Why do hurricanes and nor'easters turn around and maintain themselves in the warmer clients, climates? And it's basically because of the warmer water. And that's what we're going through now. As far as the weather and whatever, all scientists are saying in the next 50 years, our weather is going to be much worse, and we're going to get much more moisture. So this isn't something, if you go on the National Weather Service, if you go on any of the sites or whatever, it's going to tell you there's going to be more moisture. So in saying that the stream itself is dry, if that water path in that nor'easter had come in the way that they predicted it, and according to the, our storm tracking predictions, and the ones that are used in Europe, they are predicting that the storms are going to come right up our coast. So this isn't something that I'm saying, you know, this could happen or whatever. This is something they're going to say, it is going to happen. Okay. I heard the term "annual maintenance." Boy, that scared the hell out of me, you know? The pumps themselves, what's going to tell you if a pump fails? And grit, by the way, is the worst enemy of a pump. We talked about the condo owners taking care of and putting aside money to turn around and to keep the system clean. If anything happens, they're responsible and whatever. Let's go back to Raymar. And I'll read this. Despite 200 million of work led by Environmental Protection Agency and other state and federal agencies, a toxic plume flows in the groundwater seeping into homes through their very foundations, leading to the State Department of Energy and Environmental Protection to install air filters in over 100 homes. Now, this is the best part for me. Newcomers in Stratford often move into houses without any information about the extent of the problem, because neither the town or Raymar or anybody else has any legal obligation to inform them. So you can buy a house with toxic waste in it, and nobody has to tell you. And for the fact that, to finally clean up everything, Raymar had to come up with $6.4 billion, okay? Now, if you're going to tell me that they're going to turn around, where are you going to get an insurance policy for $6.4 billion? How much is that going to cost? Okay? If you have, and let's go back to ground remediation and what happens. If you have a leak in an oil tank that's buried, it can cost you up to $100,000 because of the ground that has to be remediated before you can sell a house. You talk to real estate agents and whatever, and that's what happened. I had a friend down in Stanford, had a leak in the tank, and by the time they could sell their house, it was $100,000. If a pump fails, how do you know? Does something go off, or does it just continue to run? I'm kind of confused with that issue. I'd like to read something about Long Island Sound. Long Island Sound is the largest and most important natural resource. More than 8 million people live in Long Island Sound watershed, and the activities that take place on and along the sound, boating, fishing, tourism, and swimming contribute to an estimated 5.5 to an estimated $5.5 billion per year to the regional economy. So we're not gonna fund the cleaning of the area. That's impossible. You go back, you look in an insurance policy and you see what's gonna happen and you know what? They're not gonna come up with that money. And probably what's gonna happen is they'll go bankrupt and the town will turn around and they'll be responsible to clean all that because there is not enough money there. No condo organization, if you can find me one that is insured for $6.4 billion for remediation, I'd sure like to know that. So I guess in going back over this and the fact that it's gonna be drier, when the National Weather Service says it's gonna be wetter and the fact that the temperature, the sound is going down and the representative talks about weather that has happened over the last 100 years, well, you know what? That's changed. That's changed. So if we're gonna deal with the past, then that's fine. But if we're gonna deal with what we know in the future, what's gonna happen here and what we've almost seen already, then I think we have to take a look at that. And as I said, the other point, in something that's already happened in the town, I mean, who's gonna even have a $100 million policy, you know? And who's gonna do that and who's gonna collect the money? And I think is what was demonstrated before and has happened in condo situations and whatever, they vote on the fact of whether they want that money to be put aside or not. And you know what? If you have voting, then you have the possibility that people are not gonna turn around and honor this. This has to be ironclad. There can't be any voting on this. So we're gonna have more water. Take a look at the nor'easters that last longer than hurricanes. Take a look at the path of the storm that came up the coast. Take a look at the fact that we don't know about pumps. Take a look at the cost of insurance for what will happen. Take a look at our liability as a town, taxpayers, and reclaim this property. And I don't know how we can turn around and turn this responsibility over to these people. And the other point is when they say annual maintenance, as I said, that's absolutely crazy. I ran wastewater treatment at Costco Products for 10 years. You know a lot about that. And as far as the sediment, as far as reports to EPA, as far as how you're tracking your water, the charts that you have to have, what has to be submitted, none of that's been talked about. None of it. So we're kind of at the, as they talked about, if a pump fails, well, isn't that a great statement? If a pump fails, you know? So I'd like to have you consider all of that and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?[844.23][844.23](APPLAUSE).
My name is Vivian Batista and I live at 65 Coach House Road. I'm representing the Concerned Citizens Group and their leader Merrill Pruitt and their intervenor, Mr. Richard Ezick, neither of which could come because of other commitments that they had. They had requested two things of me, one of which you've already done, which is extending the public hearing to the next month because they wanted the opportunity to review the information that was submitted and answer on that. They also wanted me to read a statement, some of which actually applies to what Mr. Smith just said and some of the other people had already said. But I just wanted to live up to my promise and say this. Okay? And this is on behalf of both Mr. Ezick and Mrs. Pruitt. I'm concerned that scientists are telling us more powerful and more frequent storms will be occurring within the next 50 years due to climate change. The applicant's failure to consider this in his drainage plans is putting us all in jeopardy of water pollution and other problems from this project that will cause increased expenses for the town and its taxpayers. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else?[924.13][924.13](APPLAUSE).
My name is Sandy Higgs and I live at 280 James Farm Road. And I am also here on behalf of Merrill Pruitt and the Concerned Citizens Group. Merrill had asked that I submit testimony for public record and, because she was unable to attend. Also, in addition, Mr. Richard Ezick is out of town and unable to read his report into the minutes. And he's asked me to read the short report on behalf, on his behalf, and submit it for the records. And also, he wanted me to let you know that, please note that there is an attachment with drawing and factual data regarding the sanitary tank. All right. The assessors reference map, map 50.00, block four, lot nine. This is his technical comments, part two. Per the applicant's engineer's verbal testimony on September 16, 2015, he stated that in the event of a power outage, the plan provides for 24 hours of effluent storage. This is a false and misleading statement. Shown on the applicant's plans, sheet SP-8 is a proposed 5,500 gallon sanitary tank. However, as a storage tank, it absolutely cannot store 24 hours of effluent in the event of a power outage. The detail illustrates an inlet and outlet pipe at approximately the same elevation. That being the case, the tank will simply fill to its maximum storage level and continually operate under this filled condition. If and when a power outage does occur, the storage tank will be operating full at the beginning of the outage and have no capacity to accommodate storage volume for the ensuing 24-hour power outage. Please see SK-1 attached. And this is submitted by Richard Ezick. Thank you.
You could just, you wanna submit that? You could just hand that to Mr. Schlegler there and we'll make an exhibit.[1067.23][1067.23](APPLAUSE). Thank you. Is there anyone else?
I'm sorry, I forgot. One quick comment because this gentleman was on my property today, okay? Looking at the forest in back of the house. And I would just appreciate it if when you people decide to gravitate up to James Farm Road, just let me know that you're there. Because by the time I got out of my door, he was gone. He's a quick guy.[1098.58][1098.58](LAUGHTER).
Thank you.
Okay? I mean, to examine all the foliage, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, you know? Just let me know you're around because I have animals and, you know, I'm in front of all this property and I see people running around. I don't know who they are. If he breaks a leg, he's on his own. Thank you.
Thank you.[1120.47][1120.47](APPLAUSE). Is there anyone else that wants to speak in opposition? Name and age, please.
My name is William Ordner, 10 Judith Terrace, Stratford. I usually come with a little something to think about. Merrill Pruitt and Mr. Ezick also asked me to read into the, just on record, the same statements that have been previously read. What I noticed tonight was some comments that I kind of eject to by these gentlemen. Number one, this gentleman here is saying that there is no viable wildlife. In the video that I actually posted online, when I actually drank the water from that stream, there was also animal footprints, which I clearly documented. And I also brought previously a poor turtle that died just over the curb from that stream. And it was dehydrated. It crawled out onto the road and it dehydrated. And the biologist that had previously testified said, "It's a very common thing where the streams cross the roads." This is a turtle that I can bring in again and you can examine and it's native to that very little area. If there's any question that there's viable wildlife, there's no question, there is. As far as the whole proposal, they're talking about bringing in hundreds of yards of gravel and soil and everything else. And all that's gonna do is gonna make all the runoff, if there is runoff, which a lot of people are anticipating. The facts that are based, that they're using are on old calculations, not the new standards that are coming out for El Nino and for the global warming. This is something that really does need to be addressed. The fact that it, these galleys, they've, there's a huge question about it. Now, it seems that everybody should be able to go to the manufacturer of this galley, whatever galley it is, and find out the exact numbers. And it should be on a grade where it's not gonna back up into the houses. There's, you know, there's several questions that, you know, the houses that they want to build are gonna be fine. They're gonna be up on a tiny little bluff. And all it takes is six inches for water to run, not even an inch. And everything goes into either the wetlands or the surrounding property, which is not fair to those property owners. Also, the other gentleman who left stated that they would have a dust control system and he referred to the UPS out on Lordship Boulevard. Well, I have some friends that work at ANCON and I have some friends that work at Duchess and all they're doing is complaining about the dust from that site. And I can tell you, as you drive from the exit ramp from the highway towards that site, all you're doing is getting more and more dirt. If you look at the bike path, the bike path is no longer there, which is mandated by law. Now, if they're gonna do that same kind of dust control on this big site, what are they gonna do on the little site? The other question is, who's gonna maintain these galleys? Are they gonna have a bond in place through an insurance company? And how much is that gonna cost them? Now, they're talking about five houses. Okay. All it takes is one person to go bankrupt, the house go bad. They could live in that house and not pay anything for a year, maybe two. And meanwhile, that's 20% of the condo association's fees. So all it takes is one house, and that's a considerable drop in the fees that are coming into that condo association for these galleys that are, they're gathering contaminated waste. This is contaminated waste. Let's not make any if, ands, or buts about it. This is contaminated waste that they're promising that they will take care of. Well, they promised they'd take care of the dust control on Lordship Boulevard and we see that. This is something, there's been questions from day one. This developer said, bought it from Mrs. Voight, only two houses. Next thing we know, it's 37. This gentleman right here said, at any time, when they wanted the 37 houses, well, we'll just raise it a story and put the parking under there. That's hundreds of thousands, if not almost a million dollars to do. But they're not willing to put in the money to do in the right infrastructure to protect these wetlands. And yeah, they're not making money. They're not making money. No one bought this property. This property sat on, for sale for years, for years, because no one, everybody knew. It's undevelopable. It's not worthy. It should be left to maybe a small one or two family house like he initially proposed and you people granted and we granted. We didn't see a problem with that. But it seems like everybody's getting hoodwinked and no one has the real hard facts. They can't even get the galley size right. No one's agreeing on the galley size. The other thing is they're gonna put 1,000 gallons of propane under the ground. Is that on their plans? Do I see it anywhere on their plans? They could bring in natural gas. That would cost too much. But if they brought in natural gas, they would never run out of gas. If we have three weeks or two weeks without power, try to get up that driveway because I've seen it. I've seen the people that live there have a hard time with just little cars and even four-wheel drive vehicles. How's a huge truck of propane gonna get up that driveway? The people that live there now get the propane while, at the very last bit before it starts snowing. And there's a reason for that because those trucks have a very hard time getting up that driveway. There's so many discrepancies that you should look into. And another thing, this man here, he's an environmentalist, he said that this is about replacing the trees and putting in the grass. Well, he's talking about, and this is out of his own words, this is his own words, that by raising the temperature of the environment in that area, it increases the amount of water. It evaporates it quicker. Are we trying to promote global warming? I mean, really, are we trying to promote global warming? Because that's the solution. Let's heat it up a little more and it'll evaporate and you won't have to worry about it going into the swamp. Those are their own words. It's their own words. Now, you know, I don't understand how this can have gotten so far because truthfully, when they don't submit a complete application, like another gentleman here said, it should be just denied. We are wasting huge amounts of taxpayer money on something that should have been denied right from the get-go. We didn't have a problem with two houses. 37? And then it was changed this, changed that. It should have been denied then, in my opinion. And there's nothing to fault any of you, but in my opinion, it should have been denied then. There's so many different things here that, you know, I can go on and on and I'm sure you've heard it from a lot of people. But if one person bombs out, that puts the finances of this whole condominium, that's a 20% drop. And anybody that has 20% drop in any kind of thing is gonna notice a difference in the level of service that's gonna come back out. It's a bottom line. It's the bottom line. All we're asking you to do, folks, is be reasonable. And we feel you already have been. You gave them two houses and we were, no one said boo. But this has gotten too far. Five houses, no. Two houses, they could have their own septic systems. They could work it out. It could be done. Five houses, no. Now you're talking about pumps. Now you're talking about underguy of propane. Now you're talking about hazardous waste. Now you're talking about runoff onto all the additional properties and the wetlands. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.[1627.26][1627.26](APPLAUSE). Is there anyone else that wants to speak in opposition? Seeing none, I will ask for, oh, go ahead.
My name is Kathy Martinez and I live at 800 James Farm Road. And I'm speaking on behalf of the Concerned Citizens Group here.
Did you get that? Could you go again with that, please?
Kathy Martinez.
And your address?
800 James Farm Road.
Okay, we got it.
I'm also speaking on the behalf of the Concerned Citizens Group also, and I concur with Mr. Smith in regards to the global warming that's coming about with our superstorms that have been coming up the coast. Climatology has shown us that these storms are much more stronger, more fierce, more intense. And I think we need to listen to that in order to be proactive and protect our valuable resources of the wetlands, of the environment there, the wildlife that's there. I don't think global warming is yet reversed. I think it's still in, it hasn't plateaued. We're still seeing effective changes with the water temperatures rising, the ice packs melting up in North America, polar regions. We need to really pay attention to that. Of course, on a global basis, but also in our own little Stratford, Connecticut, because that's where it is too. That's our little ecosystem and we want to protect that as best as possible. So I'm here to concur with the global warming, what's going on, speaking on a more global level, but also on our little local level too, of what we do have and we're trying to protect here in Stratford. Thank you.
Thank you.[1736.11][1736.11](APPLAUSE). Anyone else?
I want to thank you for coming out here and taking your time, coming out here and hearing what we have to say. My name is Jeffrey Recklet. I live at 75 Candlewood Road and I have been the property manager for the adjacent property directly north, 10 acres at 630 James Farms Road for the last decade. And I am sorry, but I would want to address the direct issues of the wetlands. The impact of clear cutting those two acres. It is so densely forested. The ground is soaking wet there year round. That is my testimony of being the property manager at the adjacent acres, which is all grassland. grassland. And the grass, and we are in a seven-inch deficit rainfall this year for 2015 alone. And the grass is still wet, in spite of what these gentlemen say. I'm sorry, but this is the truth. And when you clearcut such a densely canopied area that is soaking wet, that is habitat to many species of ferns that are growing there now, in spite of the seven-inch rainfall deficit, when you clearcut that, what you're gonna do is you're gonna create a huge, massive hole in one of the only forests left in that section of town. It'll be gone. All the species of hawks, there's three different species of hawks. One of them is a sharp-shinned hawk, which is an endangered species that uses this dense habitat as its home. The red-tailed hawks, the ospreys use this. They're another endangered protected bird that use these two forests for their twigs to build their nest and to mate and to raise their young. Among the many foxes, in fact, the wildlife is too numerous to name that uses that forest and that stream, that perennial stream, for their very drinking water. Never to mention the various species of frogs, turtles, and other vertebrate that use this stream constantly for their very survival. The irreparable damage that has already been done to this wildlife, and unfortunately, unless a restoration program is put into place. At 630 James Farms Road, at those bottom lands, there existed a two-acre pond that now Mr. Fedorko, who has now passed on, has since put a two-foot cul-de-sac pipe across the entire 400 feet so that stream can continue to flow. But he has unfortunately destroyed that two-acre pond, which should be revitalized, it should be brought back. If you clearcut this property, what's gonna happen, and I'm sure Mrs. Voight will attest to this, their grass, they never need to water their grass because the water table is so high that it's wet. And when Mr. Isaac's house was built, those two houses built on the adjacent property directly north of that, their basement was filled with water constantly, which it is no longer because that property was clearcut. So if we clearcut this property, then that means, it means the death of this stream. It will literally just dry up, and the damage, it'll just be gone. We'll never get it back. Thousands of species, I wouldn't say thousands, I think it's a little exaggerated, but maybe hundreds of species who depend on this, two acres of pristine untouched land, will cease to exist, that they will disappear. They'll go away. They won't, there's no place left for them. North Stratford is our jewel, and it's our only jewel left in this town. And I thank you for your concern and your many questions, and as we should be concerned, and as we should be united as one, as a community, against the outsider whose interest is only in revenue, in money. Unfortunately, I'm trust, we are trusting in you to make the proper decision that this should be shut down. There's no reason for this. The property was for sale for decades upon decades. Nobody could buy it because they knew that they could not build there because of the restrictions, and restrictions. That it is wet. It's wet all the time. The water level, you could just punch down a foot and hit water. It's soaking wet, and it's like that year-round. Except now, and unfortunately, in this condition, as I stated before, that we are in a seven-inch rainfall deficit just for this year. So you can imagine what's gonna happen if we do what takes, transpires when we do have a normal rainfall of 3.94 inches of rainfall per month. That, it's wet year-round. This cannot be allowed to happen. Ladies and gentlemen, please, in the best interest of Stratford, protect it, the only jewel that North Stratford has left. There's very little property. The eastern box turtle is another endangered species, and James Farms Road unfortunately is a slaughterhouse for these turtles. One just has to go there any time in May and June, and you could just, it's a slaughterhouse. It's just terrible what's going on. There's not that much property left on North Stratford. Their borders, Route 8, Shelton, it's almost gone. It's almost gone. Are we gonna let this happen? Are we gonna let this go? The second thing I would like to address is the mechanical issue. Mechanicals always fail. They always fail. It's inevitable. They're only allowed to run for X amount of hours, and they were designed to run for X amount of hours, and they will inevitably fail. And as we know, as human beings are today, as we know in the last financial crisis, in the last housing market crisis, when things get tough, people are just gonna walk. You cannot depend on people. One person walks from that community, and the burden, the financial burden of any type of systematic failure is gonna fall on the burden of the four others, they're gonna walk as well. People just don't have the same morals and values that we had when we were growing up, when America was great. People just think nothing now. A home is not their home forever. It's just an investment. So they'll just walk, and we know that from past experiences. In all humility, I ask you, our distinguished members of this committee, please consider the information that's been put forth by our Mr. Isaac. 4,000, 4,000 triaxes full of soil to be brought into this two acres. 4,000 triaxes. It's insane. We're not supposed, the reason for this commission and to protect our wildlife is not to take away and not to add. So by adding 4,000 triaxes full of soil and putting what they call mafia blocks of cement as a retaining wall, is just, it's absurd for such a pristine place. And it's all gonna seep, it's all gonna leak. We're just denying ourselves, let's not deny ourselves the truth of the matter here. Two sets of eyes, engineers, have put this plan together, and it has been ripped to shreds by our own engineer, Mr. Isaac, who is not here. Our biologist, a paid biologist. I mean, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, please, in all honesty, I humbly beg you, we cannot allow as citizens of this, for this to go through. If you were to selectively log out the property and leave the old growth trees and the canopy so that the evaporation will be at a minimal, put in a home that's gonna benefit the community with a bona fide septic system that is gonna keep our wildlife and our pristine-only stream left in place and intact and operating the way it should be, granted, I do not wish to deny anybody an opportunity to make money. That's what they're in business for, and that's what they should be entitled to do. To destroy this, to clearcut this land, and to destroy this that is used by so many and enjoyed by so many, and their survival is dependent on it, would just be a crime. Thank you for your time, and have a good day.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition? Okay, hearing none. I would like a motion for a continuation of the public hearing to our June, I mean, not June, our November 18 meeting, regularly scheduled meeting. Motion by Mr. Fay, seconded by Mr. McCann. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Thank you. Thank you, folks, for coming. That's the chair for tonight. Thank you.
I'll call you, because I want to head out there again, too. I was out earlier, but is Mr. Bellis, is there attorney still here? He already leave? Bellis?
Oh, Bellis?
He must've snuck out. I wanted him to sign off on the extension. Forget it, like, in writing. It's okay. I'm sure they're not gonna want my set. Let me just say if I had an attorney.
Go ahead. If I could just ask everyone to please clear the room, because we have a regular meeting to conduct. If you want to have your discussions, please have them out in the hallway, please. Thank you.
He's pretty. That's right. I appreciate it. But he's knowledgeable on the land because he's caretaker. And I believe, you know, this is how it's, the other guy, the guy with the blue shirt on. You know why they wanna put grass instead of trees?
Okay, I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Stratford Inland Wetlands and Water Course Commission to order at 9:05. The second, or the third item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of September 16th. They looked okay to me. I'll take a motion to approve. Mr. Waite, seconded by Mr. Blake. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, carries unanimously. On item four, there is no old business. Item five, new business. Island, yeah, Inland Wetlands Commission Permit 2014-3M. It's a permit modification to include Kenan Road Bridge deck in rehabilitation of under 20-foot span bridge at various locations throughout the town of Stratford. It's multiple locations. The applicant is a town of Stratford. Tina, what do you want to tell us about this? We could just accept it tonight?
Yes. It's a very simple addition to the permit that is already in place. The proposed decking over the bridge is gonna be replaced, much in the same thread as it is for the Light Street Bridge. The plans are pretty much exactly the same. I will be out there with the site engineers to make sure all erosion controls are in place. It really falls right in line with everything else they've done, and here's the modifications to that. These are just for Kenan Street. And if you, they have them. I give it to them already. If anyone has any questions on it, I could certainly relay them to John Casey, but it really seems like it's an easy approval to me, and I would like to work with the town and.
We'll look, we'll look at the maps, we'll, we'll accept the application tonight, and then we could vote on it in November. So I need a motion to accept the application. Mr. Waite?
I think, since it's a, I wanna say, because it's a modification, I think we can accept the permit modification tonight. Is that a possibility?
I don't have a problem with it. I mean, as long as we believe that it's, you know, it follows protocol. Yeah. Okay. So then, in other words, because it's a modification, we can move on it to accept the modification and the permit itself. I will take a motion to do that by Mr. Blake and seconded by Mr. Schlager. Is there any further discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, none. It carries unanimously. Under new business, item B, Permit 2001-9. It's the remaining bond release request on the Avalon Bay community, address 1600 Cut Spring Road and 140 Circle Drive. The applicant was Avalon Bay. Do you believe that all the conditions have been met?
Yes. There was five, four or five conditions for bond release that were in the initial permit. All had been met previously, last September, in September of 2014, and half the bond was released at that time. We were waiting a full year to make sure that all vegetation was established. I went and checked on the site, especially the retention basin slash bioswale, which was vegetated as part of the water retention system. Everything looked fine. There was three or four shrubs that were dead around the perimeter that I requested the permitee replace those, and they're already in the works replacing those three or four shrubs. And to be honest, they're not really part of the retention basin system itself.
Or cosmetic.
So I did not see any reason to hold the bond any longer at this point.
Okay. Any questions on that permit, Mr. McCann?
Do they have in their condo association, do we have escrow money for maintenance of those structures?
Good question. I don't know, but I will check the terms of the permit.
Yeah, I, that would be my only concern, that if, it almost came up here, you know, if there's not enough money in the escrow account, these, these maintenance programs may be stalled if nothing else.
And it might just go cuts if they have no way to maintain it. I, does that, I'm not sure if there would be any recourse for me to hold their bond at this point, being that they've satisfied the conditions of that section?
Well, a part of the bond is for completion of the single project, but it also, I mean, there's a long-term effect. I don't, I'm just posing this question.
No, it's, it's a good question.
It is.
And we should probably think about these things more on these, on these type of projects.
Can we release a bond, say, release it conditionally, say, you know, show me, I will release your bond if you show me.
But I don't know if you could hold them to that, though, because the bond, the original purpose of the bond wasn't for...
The bond is to get the task done that these things are supposed to be doing.
Yeah, no, I agree. I know what you're saying.
Just, just the installation of them.
Well, look, we could table it.
We've held bonds where people have not completed projects.
No, I know, I know, I know.
And it kind of, you know, I'm not saying that we shouldn't, I'm just, it's just a question.
Well, what if she goes back and she finds out that there wasn't any contingency money put aside? What happens then?
Well, on second thought, Avalon Bay is a pretty deep pocket, isn't it?
What was that?
Avalon is a fairly deep pocket, so I don't imagine we're going to have any, if we do have a problem with it.
I don't think that they're short on money. No, no.
I think they have enough money.
Yeah.
They've got plenty of money, and if they take them to court, they're gonna pony up.
Oh, okay.
So should we proceed?
Never mind.
Okay.
Good thought.
It was a good thought. But it's a good thought for, for these type of projects that we have coming in, so.
And moving forward, writing the terms of the joetta.
Yeah, no, that's, that's, we learn things as we go along. All right, then, I would like to entertain a motion for a bond release for 2001-9. Anyone want to make that? Mr. Waite, a second, by Mr. Blake. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, none. Carries unanimously. Six, staff report, anything you want to report, Tina?
Yes, there was one administrative permit, 2015-8A, for 131 went in place. Applicant was Mario Guerrero. His property is adjacent to Pumpkin Ground Brook, right behind Mill River Country Club, and he had a section of his property that was pretty much ravaged during Hurricane Sandy, where trees came down, and he had a large debris field. So he came in for a permit to remove that debris, then towards the edge of his lawn, install a retaining wall just to be able to use his lawn. It really was unusable in the current state. So he wanted to put in the retaining wall, put a little fill behind it, have his lawn reseeded, and then also replace his driveway in kind, in place. It's just his driveway's crumbling. So I wrote the permit so that there would be an adequate amount of silt fencing around the entire perimeter of the area to protect Pumpkin Ground Brook. Also want to state that the upland review area in this, for Pumpkin Ground Brook, is 250 feet. It's that extended setback, and he's well outside 100 feet. He's about 150 feet before he starts doing any work. So he's, a portion of it, though, is within the 250-foot upland review area. It was going to have, the project as a whole was gonna have a minimal impact on wetlands, so I moved forward with granting him the permit with the proper conditions to ensure there would be no worries of erosion making their way down into Pumpkin Brook. would be no worries of erosion making their way down into Pumpkin Brook. And if anyone has any specific questions on the application, I'm more than happy to entertain them, and I have the permit in office if anyone wants to.
It's completed? You did it already?
It's completed, done administratively.
Right, right. Any questions on that from the commissioners? No. Okay, anything else for staff?
One more thing. There was a, I got a call from a property owner on Barrister Road, which runs parallel to Pumpkin Ground Brook by Roosevelt Forest. So does everyone know where Pumpkin Ground Road is?
Yes.
You go to the end to the cul-de-sac, you could hop over to the Blue Trail in Roosevelt Forest, you take a quick left, and apparently a beaver has made a dam there and has literally created a lake. And it runs parallel to Barrister Road, and now this lake has come within about seven feet of the complainant's property. So obviously, they're concerned about the water encroaching on their land, possibly destroying trees, undermining trees, and having them top onto their property. So I'm currently working with the state to try and find a remedy. If we were to have a trapper come and get the beavers, they unfortunately don't relocate them, they just kill them, they euthanize them. And I had a question for you, because I heard there was a situation.
Yeah, we've done this before.
Yes, and what was.
And siphons work excellent.
And this was the thing I was looking into today. I found out there was a certain thing.
They don't know to go to the end of the siphon. You can take down the beaver dam, and he'll be watching you and repair it while you're doing it. So that's a losing battle. But they don't know, and they cue to the sound of running water. If you put a pipe in and put an elbow 10 feet away from the dam, at to the level you want, that's an acceptable level, so you're not necessarily destroying the whole pond, and pump it out, they haven't got a clue.
Well, that's good to know, and I'm glad it's worked in the past.
I have a video, there's a video that the state sent out about how to do this, by the way.
Okay, I will find that.
And it has, my son loves this one, the name of it is "How to Solve Your Beaver Problems."
The state.
It's kind of a.
The state. The state did send me some information, but I'm glad, I'm glad to know, moving forward, we have had this problem, and we have found a solution that's both protective of property and protective of the beavers. Doing what they do. I mean, I would hate to have them removed and killed.
No, you don't want to lose that.
For just being beavers, and especially, they're in Roosevelt Forest.
They're doing their job.
The last thing we want to do is have an uproar over killing beavers. So, yes, I'll be working on that, and if any permits are necessary for the siphon structure, I'll bring it forward to the commission.
I think it's pretty simple, actually.
Yeah.
I've seen, not that particular one, but.
It's just a pipe. It's literally just a pipe.
Basically just a pipe.
This is just one beaver or a family?
I'm assuming it's a family, because they're monogamous.
I would think so.
So they live as a family, and right now is around the time they start to breed, going into winter, and then they have their pups over the winter, or kits, I think they're called. And then by next spring, they grow up, and usually a family stays there, the kids will stay around for about a year before they move on, so there could be a happy little family in there.
Could be. Hate to lose them.
Exactly. Who might have stopped that?
No, no. Okay, is there anything else on staff or not?
No, that's everything.
All right, anything from the commissioners? Anyone want to discuss anything? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn by Mr. Fay, seconded by Mr. Waite. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, carries unanimously. At 9, 19, 9:20?
Yeah, I mean, I've gone in there. It's a forest. It's a forest.
It appears.
And that's why I get really frustrated.